I'd like to call the Wednesday, January 8th, 2025 Forest Lake Area School Board Meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegion.
By the名义 of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Member Revoline, are you here?
Yes.
Uh, member Corcoran?
Here.
Member Hagland?
Here.
Member Antinson?
Here.
Member Castle?
Here.
Member Christensen is here. Member Tyson?
Here.
All present. I would just like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. It's a very exciting night for our new and our returning board members. Um, I would also like to remind everyone that my usual role is the clerk, but uh, tonight I have to, I ha- I will, I will be chairing the meeting. Um, and so I would appreciate some grace if I have uh, some stumble. So, thank you very much for that. So now let's uh, move on to the acceptance of uh, the oath of office. Um, at this time, I would like to ask our new, newly elected school board members to rise. And there will be a part to repeat after me if ever, yeah, okay. So, um.
You showed it to me, but I think you took it. He's got it, Joy. Thank you, Joy.
Alright. It is an honor that you are elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education for every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation from the community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to enhance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Having previously signed the acceptance of oath of office, I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office. Please repeat after me, uh, raise your right arm, or hand, sorry. Uh, state your name.
Hi.
Swear that I will support the, or, sorry, excuse me. Uh, repeat after me. You just said your name, sorry. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member.
Of independent school district number 831 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Of independent school district number 831 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations. Welcome to the board. Okay, um, moving on to um, agenda item number four, um, approving, approving the meeting, um, agenda. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Um, there's a motion and then a second. Uh, any discussion? Member level?
I would move to amend the agenda to add item 10 dot three, uh, direct administration provide a presentation on achievement and integration plan to the board at the January 16th board meeting. Second.
I'm sorry, member level, like, could you repeat that direct administration to?
To provide a presentation on achievement and integration plan to the board at the January 16th board meeting.
Okay, thank you. And there's a second. Is there any discussion?
Point of order? Does this require prior notice?
No, this is a simple directive, um, asking the administration to provide the presentation next week.
And what was the presentation on?
Uh, on the achievement and integration plan.
And can you explain why you're amending that to add, be in addition?
Sure. I, I spoke with Doc Massey about this earlier in the week, and uh, the new board members would like to see a presentation on achievement and integration, understand what it is, how it's benefited the district, and he asked for a directive from the board to provide that to us next week.
And to clarify, did they have one in their orientation?
I would, I would add that this is, this, the motion is to add it to the agenda, um, during which, sorry, there can be further conversation at that.
Yes.
Debate is only on the amendment to the agenda, not on the item at hand.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? So, um, now we are voting on the amendment to the agenda. So we are now going to vote, um, to direct administration to provide a presentation on achievement and integration plan on our next board meeting on January 16th.
The motion is, the amendment is to add it to the agenda.
To the agenda at 10, 3, excuse me. Okay. So now, let's do a roll call to add that to the agenda. Okay. Madam Clerk, make a roll. Uh, member Ty- so if you're voting yes, you are voting to add this to the agenda, correct? Member Tyson?
No.
Member Revoline?
Yes.
Member Corcoran?
Yes.
Member Hagland?
Yes.
Member Antinson?
Yes.
Member Castle?
Yes.
Member Christensen votes yes. The yes, the yeses have it. Okay, um, any further discussion on the agenda? So now we will vote, uh, to approve the amendment, the agenda.
Yeah.
Voice vote, thank you very much. Um, um, to, let's vote to approve the agenda. If you are in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
The ayes have it. Okay. Hold on. Okay, now we are on item agenda five, election of school board officers. And before we, uh, before I take nominations, I will lay the groundwork of how this is going to work. Um, I will announce the position we are nominating, and at that time, you will be recognized by the chair if you have a nomination. I will ask for nominations three times before we close nominations. We will then hold a vote for that position and then move on to the next position. So at this time, I will open nominations for the chair. Member, um, hang on.
I nominate member Revoline.
Okay. Any further nominations?
I nominate you, Tyson.
Any further nominations? Any further nominations? The nominations are closed. At this time, please signify by raising your hand, uh, whom you would like to go for. Those voting for our member Revoline, raise your hand, please. Let the record reflect, we have four votes for our member Revoline. Those voting for member Tyson, please raise your hand. Let the record reflect, we have three votes for member Tyson. Uh, member Revoline has been elected our new board chair. Congratulations.
Okay, I promise that's the only time we have to play musical chairs tonight. Member Christensen, thank you for doing such a good job in opening the meeting. And I will pick up exactly where she left off with the same ground rules, uh, perhaps a little bit different voting pro- process than what, uh, member Christensen set up, but, uh, uh, the rules are the same. So at this point, I will entertain, uh, any nominations for the vice president. I'll go first.
I nominate member Hagland.
Alright, member Hagland, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Thank you. Any other nominations?
I nominate Jill Tyson for vice chair.
Tyson, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Alright, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Alright, with that, nominations are closed for vice president. So in this case, we will do a roll couple. I'll go around, just please, uh, mention a member you are interested in voting for. And we'll start with member Christensen.
Um, I'm sorry, instead of raising the hand, we're saying the name.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, oh, excuse me. Uh, member Tyson.
Okay.
Member Tyson.
Member Hagland?
Member Hagland.
Member Anderson?
Member Hagland.
Member Castle?
Member Hagland.
Member Tyson?
Member Tyson.
And as the chair, I will vote for member Hagland. Congratulations, member Hagland, you are the vice president. We'll do the same for the clerk. So I'll open the nominations for the clerk. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jill Christensen for clerk.
Member Christensen, do you accept the nomination? Alright, are there any other nominations? Member Castle?
I nominate member, member Antinson.
Member Antinson, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Alright, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Alright, nominations are closed for the clerk. We have member Antinson and member Tyson nominated for that position. We'll do it in the same manner. Uh, member Christensen?
Excuse me, it was member Christensen and a member.
Oh, I'm sorry, member Christensen and a member. And so, I apologize, thank you for the clarification, member Christensen.
I vote for member Christensen. Member Christensen.
So, member Hagland?
Member Antinson.
Member Antinson?
Member Antinson.
Member Castle?
Member Antinson.
Tyson?
Member Christensen?
And as the chair, I will vote for member Antinson. Congratulations, member Antinson, you are the next clerk. I will then open the nominations for treasurer. Do I have any nominations for treasurer? Member Christensen?
I would like to vote member, pardon me, nominate member Corcoran for treasurer, please.
Member Corcoran, do you accept the nomination?
I do, thank you.
Do I have any other nominations for treasurer?
I'd like to nominate member Hagland. I mean, member Castle.
Okay, member Castle, do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Alright, do I have any other nominations for treasurer? Lost track, so I will ask two more times, any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Alright, we are closing nominations for treasurer. We'll go through the same manner here. Member Christensen, um, we have, member Corcoran and we have member Castle.
Can I vote for member Corcoran, please?
And then member Corcoran?
Member Corcoran.
Member Hagland?
Member Castle.
Member Antinson?
Member Castle.
Member Castle?
Member Castle.
Member Tyson?
Member Corcoran.
And as board chair, I will vote for member Castle. Member Castle, congratulations, you are the treasurer. With that, we have concluded with our board officers, and we will move to student achievement, um, starting with the Forest Lake Area High School sad group. Who is here representing them?
Uh, we've got, uh, certain representatives here, and we've got instructors as well from the high school representing the broad group, so I'm not sure the order in which kids are speaking, but.
It's for HOSA and medical careers. It was, sad was your previous time, so I think that is.
Alright, so EMS and healthcare career, all about excellent, good. So instructors, I want you to introduce our program and our kids, and you can say a few words.
Good afternoon, I, or evening, I'm Jody Bryan. I teach medical careers, um, at Forest Lake High School. So Forest Lake High School has a robust, um, medical careers class or courses. We have eight total courses that we have, starting as freshmen, they can take exploring medical careers. As sophomores, they take, um, medical terminology, and then we kind of open up into medical dosages, pharmacology, um, EMR, and then as seniors, they can take, and CNA as a junior as well, and then, um, the senior, and EMT as a senior. So, um, we have, I mean, if you look around in Minnesota, we really have a very robust program. We're very lucky to have a really great group of students, and we have, we service a lot of students. We get a lot of students. I, I have some students that tell me that I'm their only teacher here. They go PSEO, and they take all the medical career classes, so it's kind of fun to see the same students every day. We're very blessed that we have, um, so last year, I, um, had 17 students that took the, um, competency test for the CNA and passed, so, um, that was, um, so, we're doing a great thing, because we know that help, medical careers needs a lot of people, and we are doing that, and we are getting our students to come in. And you're EMTs.
I'm Tracy Johnson. I teach the EMR and EMT program here at the high school. Um, to piggyback off what Jody said, uh, we are absolutely blessed that we have the support of everybody here and in the district. Uh, when you hear these kids speak, I'm pretty sure you'll hear them rang or rave about what they do every single day, and what they're learning. And between Jody's courses that she teaches and the courses that I teach, we are absolutely doing a service to not only our community, but literally the world. We all know that medical field needs a lot of people. Um, and we're doing our best to push mode and ready to go. So, uh, last year I had, um, last year was a weird year for me. I only had 10 EMT students. Uh, I had eight that took the national registry and eight that passed. I'm not a math teacher, but that is 100% pass rate, as far as I can tell. So, um, we're doing something right, right? So.
And then in addition, we have HOSA, um, and so I have a couple students representing HOSA, which is a Health Occupation Students Association, um, or, and so, um, they're going to come and talk a little bit about that as well, so.
Do you hear anything else from us? Questions? Go ahead, Jen.
I've got a question, Tracy. You're probably aware that this course was started by a former school board member, and he taught it as well. And so how many years have you been teaching this course?
This is my seventh year.
Wow. And how many years have we had this course? Cause we were one of the first districts to kind of start.
11. It's, no, it's more than that. It's more than that. I think we're at like 14 or 15. Kendrick and I debate this frequently. So, Paul Kendrick was my predecessor.
Okay, yeah.
He's like, I think it was seven or eight, and now I went seven, so I, again, I'm not a bad teacher.
That is really remarkable.
It's, it's fabulous. It's the, I tell everybody that I, hands down, me personally have the coolest, greatest job in the Forest Lake Schools district.
And I know a lot of graduates and their moms tell me that their son and daughters just had a leg up in college, having had these courses at our high school level.
In the fall, in August and September, when kids start college, I get a handful of text messages every year from kids that go, "I am so glad I took EMT. I'm so glad I took medical terminology, because I am way ahead of my peers in XYZ nursing classes" or whatever classes. So, uh, it really does set them up for huge success. And the confidence that they walk out the door with, right? Whether they take and pass the national registry on my end, or take and pass the CNA test, either way, I, I tell them, I say, "You don't, you don't have to work one day as a nationally registered EMT, but you are light years ahead of so many people in the fact that you can recognize and respond to any medical emergency, right? Whether it's personal, whether you're at a football game or a, like a grocery store, right? It doesn't matter, like you're, you're equipped. You're equipped to make a difference." And I said, "Because of the tools that you have, you will make a difference in someone's life. You will be in the right spot at the right time, when you are needed." And, and that's empowering for them.
Well, thank you for all that you do, and we're so proud of our students that have gone on to their careers in this, and you giving them that confidence.
Absolutely.
Instruction.
Forest Lake High School has had the CNA program for, I think, over 20 years. It started in the 90s, so I mean, like, that's like, been a long time too, so it's been a hand in hand. And now we're fortunate to call it medical careers, because, yeah, it's a program versus a couple classes.
Right. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is this a year long, I can't remember, and we did the tour, but is it a year long training?
You go ahead.
So, the, most of the classes that we teach, that I teach anyway, are, are semester-long classes, so with the exception of EMT, which is a year long.
Okay. Right, with the change in the, going from the five-period day to seven-period day? When it was five-period, EMT was half their school day, half the year.
Yeah.
Um, now EMT is two hours of the day for the entire year.
Okay.
So, our EMR class, or my EMR classes are semester courses now for one hour. Um, they used to be on a block for one quarter.
So, I love it that we have that here too.
Yeah, we're super fortunate. Yeah.
What race did you say again? The students are growing.
Nine through 12.
Nine through 12.
So, medical careers is nine through 12, for, um, the certification classes, 11 and 12.
And would, would you be able to state off the topic here, or maybe one of your students be able to speak to it, of the training that they've received in school? Has it ever, have they ever had to put into practice either during the school day, at a, a school event, where that has real-world impacted not, not only themselves, but some of their peers?
I don't believe we have students that will talk to that, so I'd rather you hear it from the students than from us.
Well, I've had kids that, you know, there was a gentleman that was choking at Applebee's one time, and one of my students jumped up, ran across to the restaurant, "I got this." You're not kidding when you give someone the Heimlich, flies out. And they say, "Thank you."
I run many basketball tournaments over the years, and I've always had your, the students kind of be the, the, the medical person there.
Yeah.
And it's been awesome to have the students.
We get a lot of positive feedback for doing that. Uh, a lot of parents that walk in and say, "It's so nice to, you know, you see these kids in uniform," and it's like, they say, "It's really nice to just know that you're there."
It is.
So, and they, you know, the, one of the best benefits of doing things like the basketball tournament is, you know, we live in a very techy-based world, right? They're really good at this, they're not really good at this. Um, and they get really good at this. That's the, that's the practice, really, uh, you know, anybody can hand anybody an ice pack and look and see if a vehicle's broken or not. Um, but being able to talk to and calm someone down and explain things and, you know, get them to a point where either you, yes, you need medical attention, or no, you know, you probably don't need.
Definitely got some real-world experience during the term.
Hundred percent injuries. Hundred percent, yes.
I really appreciate that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say that I, I had the privilege last spring of going to the graduation, um, for your, for the students, and I was so impressed, they just were rattling on, you know, one was going to be an Air Force nurse, and I, all the places they were going and all the things they did, and were gonna be doing was super impressive, so I'm looking forward to hearing that.
It's an amazing jumping offs, or jumping in spot, right? Like, if you are interested in the medical field, and, or if you think you're interested in the medical field, you get in, or you're like, eh, that's, that's important too, right? Like, it's not my jam? It's good to know.
Yeah, we save.
Find it out sooner than later.
We save students thousands and, thousands of bucks and, um, lots of time. You know, if they come in and they say, "Oh, that's not me," great, great, that's a success too.
But they go from here to, you know, the possibilities around. Absolutely. Is that it? Thank you.
Do you have a question?
I'm gonna respectfully push back. Um, you're, you're not just teaching them potential career skills or, or healthcare skills, these are life skills. Um, I am the, I'm the guy who went to college for all technology, pure science, math, physics, cybersecurity. Um, and I was thrown into a life of healthcare and needing to understand medical terminology and needing to understand this. I've had to learn it, what I joke with our nurses and our medical staff, I learned it the hard way. I learned it sitting in the doctor's office, learning it from the staff, rather than learning it from a book. The book is preferable, but these are life skills that even if the students don't go into a medical career, one day they're gonna be in that situation where they're working with a, a loved one or a family member.
Yep.
And these skills that they're gaining in high school today.
Yep.
That you're helping, uh, deliver to them are gonna prove to be beneficial at that moment. So, being the math guy, I'm gonna ask the math question. Do we have any idea, even a rough number of how many students have gone through the program? How many, uh, maybe even a given year, we can extrapolate that out?
I usually have around, um, 150 kids that go through the Exploring Medical Careers class, which is the nine through 12. So that's the beginning, and what I love about that class is we teach kids, you know, everybody thinks of medical careers, right? We think doctors, nurses, physical therapists, and that's kind of where we stop. But the world is like unbelievable, like, I, we have an aquatic therapist to come in, in to talk, so get some really fun. This year, we were lucky enough to have, um, somebody from MediView come out, and they were able to use the VR goggles and see all of the stuff that the University of Minnesota students are using and all of that, so we were able to do that. Um, I usually have for medical terminology around 80 kids a year. Um, medic, pharmacology is short, so 30, you know, I mean, I get like, probably, I probably have 150 kids a year that I have.
EMT is averaged, um, over the years, there's only been two times when I've been, that I've taught, so the seven years that I've taught, one was a COVID year, and I had 10 students, and I said, "You're the 10 bravest humans on the planet right now." Um, and then last year I had 10, but usually I, the EMT class averages, we cap it at 25, 24, 25. Uh, so it's, it's average, it's been full just about every year. So of those, maybe 15 years, uh, only two of them haven't been full. And then my EMR, the EMR courses, probably have 100 kids a year.
That's excellent. That's an obvious and measurable difference in our communities.
Huge.
Thank you very much for all the work.
Yep. And just for clarification, that EMR certification that they come out with, if they, if they stop at EMR, they are trained to the same level as every police and firefighter in the state. So, you know what to do.
Any more questions?
Any questions? Thanks, thanks for your support.
Thank you.
We should start on this end with HOSA.
Yeah, go get your.
Hello, I am Adeline.
I'm Eva.
We're talking about HOSA today, so, um.
HOSA stands for Healthcare Occupation Students of America, and it's a student-led club that helps all students that might be interested or are for sure interested in healthcare, get more experience to the field and all types of jobs in it. Um, it gives experiences to learn. Um, there's, similar to FFA or DECA, you can compete, um, with skills that you did learn in some of your medical classes or through the club itself. You have a chance to, um, compete and show your knowledge in those, get recognition from them, and just valuable life experiences. Um, it's also very service, um, focused. We really have been trying to push in the few, um, weeks that we got it started, um, service projects to make a difference on our community and give experience to those a little bit more.
Yeah, so because we're planning to be a service organization, we've already had two meetings. This has all kind of been moving very quickly. And in those meetings, so far, we've made holiday cards for nursing home residents, and then in the future, we plan to do many more service, like acts, such as assembling some, like, kits and donating them, or doing tie blankets and donating them to hospitals, but, yeah. Does anybody have any questions for us? It's.
Do you, Tyson?
Hold on. Sorry. How many years has the club existed, or is this the first year?
Um, the club has existed for a few years.
Okay.
It hasn't been able to, um, stay afloat and keep going due to some leadership issues or just, um, lack of organization. So, um, we are in medical classes together. Um, we both really have an interest in healthcare and really wanted to be in this club, so we thought, why not better than to try to start it up, and that way we can make sure it keeps going and do our best to get everyone involved.
Wow, well, thank you so much for doing that and for being here tonight to tell us about this.
Of course, we're happy to be here.
Yeah, I can tell. Thank you for your hard work. It just sounds like an excellent mission that just reaches out to the community as well. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Did you two, I mean, how many are?
Did you two, I mean, how many are in the club right now that, obviously, the two of you and you're representing?
So, we have about 30 people in our group chat, and quite a few people came to the first meeting. There wasn't quite as many because the second meeting was the Friday before winter break. So, it was like, the roads are icy too.
We got, we got a list of people interested when we spoke to classes, and that list was of about 60 people.
That's amazing, yeah. Well done.
Thank you. So, you said you have healthcare aspirations, like, what do you think in for your future? Like, hospital administration and kind of being?
I would like to be a nurse practitioner. I'm in pharmacology right now, I've taken Exploring Medical Careers. I'm going to be in med term and the CNA, and hopefully signing up for EMR, maybe EMT too.
So, you're a lot of medical.
Yes.
I have a goal of becoming a nurse anesthetist in the future, and I have also taken many of the medical classes, such as pharmacology, medical terminology, CNA, and exploring medical careers.
So, are you, I guess, what's your, like, what grade in school are you?
We're both juniors.
Both juniors, so you got one more year.
Yep.
Do you have ideas for colleges yet, like, where you're looking at?
I'm working into the U a little bit, but the doors are still, other doors are open and stuff.
Well, yeah, you have a great background, you have a lot of medical, that's very impressive because they're hardworking.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me.
All right. Hi, I'm Dakota Plack, I'm a senior at Forest Lake High School. One of the classes that had helped me develop my passion for medical careers would be the Exploring Medical Classes. Taking the Exploring Medical Career Class really helped me know where I wanted to be going into the real world. When I was little, I've always wanted to be a doctor, but I didn't know what type of doctor to be. So, taking the class my sophomore year really put out an interest in what I wanted to be and what I wanted to put all my focus on. Taking this course didn't only help me, but I know it helped many other students in that class who shared their passion with me. I would say this class had been one of my top five favorites for most important and helping me understand what my future would look like. This program has pushed me and encouraged me and inspired me. If I didn't take this class or wasn't offered it, I really wouldn't know where my next steps would be. I've taken all the medical careers, or taken all the classes, medical careers, medical dosage, CNA, EMR, medical terminology and pharmacology, all the medical classes except one class, which is EMT, because we were only allowed to take CNA or EMT. All these medical classes has stepped me, or has helped me know my next step and helped me prepare for my future. And I didn't believe that I'd take all the medical classes that I was allowed here, but I did, and I really enjoyed and loved the teaching and skills I've developed. If I had never taken any of the medical classes, I really wouldn't know where my passion would be. CNA had given me an opportunity to help put my next step outside the real world because it has given me the experience and knowledge. Because right now, I work at a retirement center, and it really helped me understand, like, why I'm here, what I'm doing, what my job is. And then EMR has also provided a thought in my head to always know how to care for people and strategies on what to do. So, thanks to Jody and Tracy, that has really gave me a pathway to know I want to become, and thanks to the programs that have offered, that I was offered. I have my future now set out and all my plans set for college and my future life. So, thank you for listening. Any questions?
And you didn't mention that these are concurrent enrollment. How many college credits have you covered them all up?
From the medical classes, I'm pretty sure they're all college credit, except the Exploring Medical Careers. But I have not counted them. Yeah, I got a lot of credits. Ten, 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 ten.
All college credits, what do you go to college? We're going through a semester of college, guys, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Any questions, congratulations.
In that Exploring Medical Careers class that you took, and I'm sorry, but was it half the year?
Yeah.
Yeah, and what, was there any one or specific thing in that class that you learned about that helped you? Or was it just overall, the class in general?
Well, there would be like speakers that would come into that class and tell us their interests and their jobs and what they do and what it details and stuff. And there were two people that came into that class. One was for like, a nurse for the children, and one was a cardiologist. And they talked about what they do, and that really set, where I was like, yep, I want to become that. I want to put both of those together and be that.
You're well on your way. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much for coming out and sharing your story.
All right, hi, I'm Alicia Marsh. I'm currently a senior at Forest Lake High School. I'm currently taking three medical classes, and I'm taking more next semester. I will be frankly honest, at first, I was terrified going into the medical field. I didn't think I was smart enough, I didn't want to deal with anyone's life because that is a terrible thing to do, and it's scary. It's scary having someone else's life in your hands. So, the first class I took was med dosages with Jody. And I took it, and I immediately fell in love with it because Jody doesn't just talk about like the core, she tells you about her past experiences, and she influences you as not just a teacher, but a leader in the medical field. And then I ended up taking many more classes, including pharmacology, med careers. I'm taking med terminology next semester, including EMT, which I wish I could take EMR because it sounds super cool, and they get to wear the cool uniforms. But I, taking the class made me find my confidence in myself to just pursue a medical profession. And basically, it sparks passion in some people, but it also just educates everyone on just basic life things. Like, if someone's telling you what's going on in your body, you want to know what's going on, and those classes provide that to you. It basically helps you understand who you are as a person and everyone around you. So, basically, all I have to say.
Any questions for Alicia?
I want to know how you overstepped that fear and took the class. Like, what was the push that propelled?
Well, my parents, they were like, "You gotta figure something out," and I always loved helping people. So, I don't know why I chose med dosages as the first one, because that's all math. But, I mean, it was really easy when you have someone that's standing next to you helping you through that. So, yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, oh, actually, you mentioned it's all math, it's critical math.
Yes.
You can't make a mistake, ever, not once. I've seen what happens when people do make mistakes in that, so it's vitally important to appreciate you kind of overcoming that fear and stepping into it, because that's what we need for our future. Lots of jobs are scary, but that doesn't mean they don't need to be done. Now, I did see you kind of nodding when we asked, you know, how, how students engage and actually help. I saw you sit in the background nodding. Do you have a story you can share with us?
Yeah, so, there's been like instances where like, I'm at work, and I've had like, we have a dishwasher, and he's cut his hands open, he's been bleeding, no one else in the kitchen is able to respond, everyone is chaotic, there's blood. What are we gonna do? I mean, I was kind of taught how to respond to that, and I had like the background information, just how to stay calm and react to the situation, instead of freaking out like everyone else. So, I mean, there's been a few instances at work, just out in public, just reading people's demeanor, and if they're like looking okay, you can just tell.
I appreciate you sharing that story. I promise that was organic, that just, even though it proves my point of life skills, that was purely organic, so thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
My name is Anthony Tower. I am a senior this year. And I'm sure like many of my peers, I came in going to high school, not having a clue what I wanted to do. And that all changed my junior year, when I took Jody's CNA class. And that made me really realize that I had a real strong passion for nursing. That class taught me all sorts of skills. Spent hours every day because it was a double block at that time, right? Yeah, so, a lot of time in that class, just talking, learning how to engage with people and take care of them. And now, because of that, I have, just about a year now, I've been working as a CNA myself after I got my license. And that's given me a lot of real-world experience that I've been able to build off of, and to teach, and really launched me into the healthcare field, which I've been very blessed with and I'm very grateful for. This has just been a really amazing opportunity. You can tell by the uniform, also Tracy's EMZ glass. It's just been amazing to just learn these things. I can help take care of myself, I can help take care of other people. Like the situation that Alicia was in, there's just, anything can happen at any time. And knowing that if I'm there, I can help that person, and I can intervene when I need to. So, yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
I saw you also shaking your head up and down in real-life situations. Was there one or a specific one that you experienced that you had to jump in and help with?
Yeah, one of my residents far back at work, she suffered, or not suffered, she had diabetes. And I worked the later shifts, and she, I walked in, and she was a little confused, sweaty. And because of work classes, I noticed that she was being hypoglycemic. She had a very low, very low blood sugar, it was around the 50s, 60s range. So, me and my nurse took the necessary steps, giving her that sugar, giving her that protein. And if we didn't notice it at that time, we'd be in a way different state right now.
I have a quick question. So, are you taking your certification or do you have it? When do you get to wear that uniform?
For EMT.
Yes, for EMT.
So, we get it at the closer to the start of the class. And then we wear them on our skill days, on our ride-alongs. We don't earn the certification until the very end of the year. We take it at the class. But I do have my CNA, yes.
You have your CNA. And I know that our students have relevant and real-world experience, like you described the ride-along. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Well, the ride-alongs? Yeah, so basically, we can, we have the opportunity to go with many different ambulance companies, hospitals.
You have the requirement.
We have the requirement. We don't have a choice. Me personally, or most of us right now, are going with M Health, and they're about 12-hour shifts. So, some people are four-to-fours. I took mostly the PM to the AM, because I'm not waking up that early. Just a really good opportunity to really get invested in the community and help as many people as we can.
That's wonderful, that's a big responsibility as well and a great learning avenue. Thank you, thank you.
I'm Logan Fisher, I am a senior and taking EMT. I've been fortunate enough to have a mom who worked in the medical field. She was working as a nurse for a company, and is now managing multiple buildings. I was able to assist her with feeding her, with providing food for residents, cleaning up, playing games. So, I got that experience straight out of the jump with that. Seeing that, hey, I want to work in the medical field. So, I've always loved helping people. Classes at the high school, they have been very grateful, I've been grateful for the teachers, and the opportunities that they give, the knowledge, I mean, Exploring Medical Careers. We had a lot of wonderful speakers, and it's just getting better. And I've been able to expand on, hey, this is more, I like working in this field, maybe not this. Medical terminology, I've been able to use it for not just the medical fields, but also in a lot of other classes, including PSEO. EMR, EMT, those have been able to give me real-world experiences. I've been able to start working towards my EMT certification and allow myself to get experience in college as an EMT, and also be able to add my experience or future job opportunities and everything else. So, the medical career classes, they've been just very helpful for not just me, but all the students and many, many more. Any questions?
All right, thank you for coming in.
Hello, my name is Bianca. I, I've always liked helping, but I never really thought about it with humans. It was always with animals, that's what I connected with. Because with animals, they, they don't have a voice, they can't tell you what's wrong. They never will be able to. So, it's really helped me to learn that I want to help with people who aren't able to necessarily tell me what exactly is wrong. So, the people who need a voice. So, like babies, children, the elderly, they need a voice. And that's what I want to work towards. And the medical careers at Forest Lake have helped me realize this a lot. I started with Jody's CNA class, and then after that, I moved on to Jody's medical terminology, pharmacology, and EMT. And it's probably been the best experience I've had with school. Because school's never come easy to me, it never has. I still have to work hard for every single grade I get. But I just, having a passion for it definitely makes a big difference. I'm glad that these courses are at our high school.
Any questions here, I think? So, when you're working with animals, the only voice that they have is they can whimper and stuff, so that you can tell that there is something wrong. But then the body language is how you can determine, if you can determine anything, where something might be there clinking, or they're licking, or something like that. And the same thing with people. Many people are, would be in a condition where they can't speak to you, but you still have to try to determine where problems lie. And so, have you been able to use some of that animal knowledge with the people right off the bat?
Last year, during spring break, my cat, he ended up getting a urinary blockage and had to be rushed to emergency surgery due to that. And if I would have never been able to recognize that his tummy was just full of liquid, and he just, he couldn't get it out anyway, I probably would not have my cat to this day.
Yeah, good.
Any other questions?
I love that you found your passion through these courses, and I like what you said about when you find a passion for something, it just, it makes, even though learning may still be difficult, that makes it all worth it. Very nice. I was gonna say, I was gonna echo what you just said. The school's not, the school's not easy. I mean, everything is a little challenging in different areas. When you find something you really care about, that's when things kind of fall into place. So, I'm glad you found that, your passion for that.
I would definitely agree with that.
Yeah. I mean, I'm glad we have, at Forest Lake High School, we have things that fit for every student. There's such a fun, you know, like, being adventurous and trying different things that maybe you're afraid of at first. Finding that one thing just really opens your world for opportunities, so.
It definitely does. And these courses have also helped me help other people in my family.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
And without them, I wouldn't have been able to just help some people be more comfortable in their life.
Well, I'm excited to see where your life leads you, your passion.
Thank you.
Yeah, best of luck. Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming in. I think that concludes the EMS and healthcare group. So, I just want to preemptively thank all of you for the work you're about to do in the future. And I'm glad that the courses that we have here at Forest Lake have kind of helped guide you into that profession. It's one that we badly need, and as we remember, Anderson could attest to, it's a fascinating field. If you haven't had a chance to meet with Member Anderson yet, we encourage all of you to do associate as a background in that field as well. So, with that, we will call Principal Matson. You have a tough act to follow, but I know that you are up to the task.
Okay, good evening. Dr. Masshands, department members, I Q.
Dr. Mass hands, support members, thank you so much for inviting us to come. For some of you that have been around, you know that this is one of the highlights of my year, to come and brag about Linwood Elementary, because there really is no place like Linwood. So...
Principal Mattson, just to interrupt briefly, if people would like to get pictures, especially with all the kids that we have in here. Feel free to come circle around behind us here, get some pictures. It's a little bit different view from over here, so join us.
Oh, okay. Oh, the parents. Okay, I was like, okay.
Principal Mattson, if you'd like to say a prayer?
Don't tempt me. Okay. So I'm gonna just jump in. Just real quick, today, our goal is to really talk about how students play a huge part at Linwood and how their voice is very important. And then we also are gonna hear from Abby Heinz, who is with us every day through a grant. And I don't want to share too much about what she's gonna share, but she's gonna tell you about what she does at Linwood. So when I worked in my previous district, I worked in a school where we had ambassadors and the students were the ambassadors. And the reason that we chose ambassadors and to have kids involved is because we wanted them to have voice. We sat around as adults and a staff and we thought, we're making all the decisions. We're deciding spirit days. We're deciding what we're gonna do for events. We were making all the decisions. And we started to quickly find out that our students had great ideas and then we didn't have to do all the hard work. They were excited to be a part of that. So just a little bit of reason why we do the ranger groups and the importance. So we don't call ambassador groups, we call ranger groups, because we're rangers in Forest Lake. And I just wanted to put, I'm not gonna read that to you, but what research will tell you is, when you have kids involved, whether it's at elementary, middle, high school, when they have that sense of belonging, when they feel like they have voice, their attendance goes up, the engagement in the classroom goes up, they feel like they're a part of something. And if you can think back to when you were in school, we always wanted to be a part of something. And so one way that we thought we could do that is through our ranger groups. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna have each ranger group come up, just tell you briefly what they do, and then we'll have kids maybe share just a little bit about how it has impacted them. So we're gonna start with our Lion Rangers. So just our Lion Ranger group.
Hi, my name is Tanya Kenees. I am the acting behavior interventionist at Linwood. Been there for about five years, had a few previous years at Wyoming and other roles. Since the inception of the ranger groups three years ago, I have been the facilitator of the Lion Rangers. And our core function is kind of to be the PBIS or the Positive Behavior Ambassador. So we kind of look at the embodiment of our matrix, which is positive, respectful, integrity, dependable, and engaged. And focus our activities around supporting, demonstrating, and modeling that in the building. Some of the tasks that they take on are like spirit days. They also fulfill roles as bus ambassadors. And they like to create fun challenges in the building that promotes and further spreads pride throughout our building. And I'm gonna turn it over to a few of our rangers that we have here. We'll go first.
Hi, I'm CEO Larson for Linwood Elementary. I'm here tonight to tell you why I enjoy being in my ranger group. We can tell about, how about the school in many ways, with spirit, by picking out fun spirit days and hosting events around the school. We also go around classrooms to talk about safety at recess and bus safety. Thank you for your time.
Hello. Hello, my name is Ariana Weath. And I am in the ranger group, Lion Rangers. And we plan and organize fun events for our school, like spirit days. My favorite thing about the pride, about being in the, favorite thing about being in the Lion Ranger group is that we get to think a lot about the events coming up and what we're doing for the events. I also like that we have bus and recess monitors.
Hi, my name is Abby Heinz. I'm in charge of the Influence Rangers. So our group, we really help with like the community building and the events at Linwood Elementary. So we often help with assisting, helping with setting up and taking down events. That includes the book fair, Pride Breakfast, Turkey Bingo, Books and Breakfast, and Spring Fling. We help students and families at events, answer any questions, welcome them, greet them in. And they also help come up with ideas for activities to help Linwood just continue to feel like a warm and welcoming place for all students and families. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Izzy Bullock.
I'm Zoe Dalek.
And I'm Jayden Lum.
Being an Influence Ranger is all about helping our school community. We help with the setup and take-down of school events. At the book fair, we create activities for students to get excited about reading with their family.
We help serve food at Pride Breakfast and Turkey Bingo. We help make decorations for school events. We also create fun challenges and activities around the school for teachers and students to enjoy. For example, every day, we post a new daily joke to bring smiles to others. These are some of the reasons we wanted to join the Influence Rangers and why we love it. We love making fun activities for the younger students. We want their school experience to be fun and welcoming. We're proud of our work and it is fun to be involved in the group.
We like to help before and after school. We love to, we love to help at events and make sure students and families have a good time. We love the friendships we've made in our group.
All right, hello everybody. My name is Nathan Richards. I am the school counselor at Linwood. This is my first year and I was very much blessed to be able to lead these awesome group of students. We have both the fifth and sixth graders and our kindness rangers. And it's such a blessing being able to see these students prioritize kindness over different things. It can be very easy to slip into joking, making fun of others. It is amazing seeing these students every day encourage one another and find ways that they can truly make a difference and bring smiles to others around them. So I'm gonna let them quickly introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Dominic Novak and I'm part of the Kindness Ranger Group. So we can spread kindness to the students. One of my favorite things about being in the Kindness Ranger Group is to help encourage your kids.
Hi, my name is Esme Prufetti. I am a kindness ranger because I want to spread kindness to our staff, teachers and staff. I am also a kindness ranger because I want to leave this school a better place than when I got there.
Okay, so I lead the Forest Ranger Group, of course, because I love the forest. So just a few things about the forest. The forest is interesting to try to do events because we meet twice a month every group and it's a very short time. So when we're doing work in the forest, we can't go out there twice a month just because we don't have the time. So we do a lot of planning, but some of the things that we're working on is we have an island in the forest, so we're gonna look at giving that name to, we're gonna start maple syruping with some help from Ms. Heinz this spring. And they do, they help with community events, they help with the tower gardens. And some of our future projects are having our Forest Rangers do safety presentations with our students at school, especially the kindergarten and first grade students. We are gonna do a drawn map of the forest. We have a picture one, but it's often very hard to navigate. And so we would like to do a drawing of the map that the students will help with. And then they will also be leading the spring cleanup, which we talked about last night at our school forest committee meeting. So we do a lot of fun things, but I'll let them share quickly what they would like to share.
Hi, my name is Athena Holycross and I'm in fifth grade. And I like being in the Forest Rangers because we come up with fun ideas and help the forest and Forest Rangers. We do fun activities like name the island contest and we are doing a safety, or a safe, forest safety in front of the kindergarten.
My name is Lucas Folsom. One thing I like about Forest Rangers is doing assignments with friends and thinking of assignments to do. Something that we're thinking about doing in the Forest Ranger Group is giving a forest safety presentation to the kindergarteners. We're thinking about doing this to keep them, keep them and wildlife safe.
All right, so we have just like a shift to our next presenter, but we were just wondering if you have questions for the kids that maybe want to do that now, because we'll send them on their way before we do the second part.
I have a question. Schoolwork can be kind of serious work, so I would love to hear one of your daily jokes. I would love to hear one. Why do the bed isn't healing very well?
It's kind of fun because we have it hanging in the front and then it has the joke and then there's a little piece of paper they can lift up to see the answer. So it's fun in the morning to see all the kids go over there and read that.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank all of you for being so patient and waiting. Like Member Christian said, we never know how long and unending our board member, our board meetings can be. We appreciate you waiting. You're all so articulate and it was so fun to hear what you read. It just felt like it was written from the heart and I really appreciate that. One quick question I have is how do you determine who's in the group and how many you can have in the group and all of that good stuff?
I'm sure they're sick of hearing me.
But we have an application process in the fall. So what we do is the four of us visit all fifth and sixth grade classrooms and we present each group and then we allow them to fill out an application. And then Tanya and Abby got together this year and just kind of sorted out, they had to do a first or a second choice. So they balanced all those groups out and then that's how they ended up being in the group that they were in. When you're in sixth grade, which will change next year to fifth grade, they have some priority. So if they were in the group last year, they would remain in the group if they choose to do that.
And I love all the components you have integrated into the ranger groups. And all that work is so important in creating a wonderful community and climate out at Linwood. And we're just so proud of our Linwood Elementary and all of your hard work. Thank you.
I have a boardroom.
No, I was just gonna, is it, so it's an all-year program? Once they're in that group, are they counted for the whole year?
Yes.
Okay. And how often do they meet? Is it kind of, maybe you might say it, but...
We, we meet twice a month during their lunch. So they all come together, we eat our lunch together, and we plan.
It's just, I mean, this is part of, like I said, these meetings can get kind of long, but this is what makes us so happy, is to see these young, wonderful faces coming. And I appreciate all the parents taking the time to come and meet with us and hearing about this great programs, because we don't always know what goes on at each elementary school. So this has been really great and eye-opening, but thank you so much.
Member Mattson, would be maple syruping, will there be a pancake breakfast?
So this is our first year. I wrote a grant actually with Lake Center and they supplied all the materials for that. So it's our first time doing it. I, I love pancakes, so yes, we will absolutely be doing that. But I also know you have to collect a lot of sap that you burn down, so we will have to really probably bring in, you know, some Mrs. Butterworths to just kind of carry over. But yeah, for sure.
Would you be able to accept material from other residents? There's many people around where I live.
Yeah.
And there's bags hanging from trees every year.
Yeah.
And so you'd be able to accept donations?
Yeah, oh, for sure. And we have two people that are in our community that used to do it at Linwood and they haven't, and they're gonna kind of come back and help us as well. So that'll be great. Yeah?
Member Anderson.
I think I told you this before, but my husband and I do maple syrup and I would love to come and help anytime. And we actually, just so you know, we went to on New Year's Day, over to Osceola and passed this farm and they, all their stuff is up.
Oh.
And we were like, oh my goodness, I don't know, so anyway.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to say to all the students that you have here tonight, in case you don't realize what you're doing, is you're becoming a leader. And you do things like this and that's pretty awesome. So, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I just want to say thanks to Ranger Folsom for not letting his injury bother back and coming today. I wish he was getting a recovery.
All right, I would like to thank Principal Mattson for coming in and giving us the presentation here. We always ask these presentations are kind of short and sweet and then we drag them out with questions, but that's good.
We just have one little more.
You do?
Yeah. We just wanted to do this because I know the families have places to go. So we wanted them to be able to feel okay if they need to leave. And then we just have Ms. Heinz coming in and talking about a grant that we have.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah. And thank you to the students for coming in. It really helps us connect with the work that we're doing here in the boardroom.
Okay. I'm gonna bring it back up. Nobody hear me, okay?
All right, hi, my name is Abby Heinz. I am the enrichment coordinator. I currently work through Lake Center for Youth and Families. We have a really great partnership with your district through a few different avenues, but I'm here to speak about mine today. I know you like short and succinct, so I'm gonna do the best that I can. I promise I won't try to read directly from the slides, but just to give you a snapshot, there's a lot that kind of goes under the umbrella of my role. So just a little bit of background information. Our program was created in partnership with Linwood back in 2020 and it's funded through government grants. It's grown and expanded each year, the more that we've experienced and looked at the needs of the schools and ways that Lake Center can support Linwood. Principal Mattson and I meet monthly to discuss how things are going, any changes that we need to make, things like that. The three main goals of our program, which we'll get to on our next slide, really the overall goal of it is to help the prevention and intervention of high-risk behaviors either in the immediate moment or down the long-term path. I joined the program this year after teaching at Linwood Elementary for the last four years. I taught kindergarten and first grade there. So it's really special for me now to get to work with all the students in new ways and they're older now and that's been really fun. So quite a few of those kids were the first kids I ever taught. So that's just been really special to work with them in different ways. So the three core objectives that I kind of work through in all of our activities, kind of funnel through, it's really to help students increase their responsible decision-making, their conflict resolution skills, and just to help them develop and maintain positive relationships with caring adults, being me, or helping them with their relationship with other adults in the school. So for this first goal, this is provided in a lot of ways. So to hit the responsible decision-making, one of the best parts that is opened up to our fifth and sixth grade students are called lunch clubs. And the current lunch clubs that we have are Healthy Hearts, Career Club, Art Expressions, Book Club, and Internet Awesome. So you can kind of see the little blurbs under there, just a quick snapshot of some of the things that we might cover in those clubs. The students meet with me once a month and we go over some of that. I really try to base it off of the kids' interests, because as we know, the more kids are interested in it, the more engaged they are. I would say most of the time, it's never really hard to get them to want to come with me. They're pretty excited to connect in that small group setting. I pull them at their lunchtime so they're not missing any academic content. It's just bonus enrichment for them, so that's pretty fun. I also do more kind of generalized social, emotional lunch bunches that's open up to the K4 students currently, it's with first grade students. And that covers more things like how do you be a kind friend if you're feeling upset? Maybe what's a strategy to help you calm down in the moment? Reassuring them that we all have tough moments in our day and that's okay. We can always turn it around and make the rest of the day great. So like I said, that's a similar process to how the Influence Ranger groups are created. The kids get a survey, they pick their top three choices, and the best that I can, I try and get them in their first and second. And then another piece that kind of goes under this core objective is our preventative programming. So I do the alcohol awareness programming as well as the vape-free programming. And so it's just kind of the basic understandings of the effects that these choices can have on your body and on your health. We talk a lot about, you know, what are their personal... We talk a lot about, you know, what are their personal goals in life? How can we stay on that track to achieve them? And if we use one of these substances, how could that possibly affect your goals? So kind of setting them up for the long term. And then below those are the two curriculums that are used for that. To hit the conflict resolution skill piece, we do a couple of different projects. So with the sixth graders, I do service learning projects. So similar at the beginning of the school year, I give them a survey and explain, you know, we're going to try and create a project that's going to help our community. It could be our school, it could be the Forest Lake Linwood Community or even bigger. And they choose kind of what they're interested in. This really builds those collaborative skills that they need as they're going into middle school and high school and they're joining in on group projects at like a higher level. And so some of the projects that have been done in the class have been like a police appreciation project, helping shelter animals, running a donation drive. And then it was cool, some of the kids got to go and then visit the animals in the shelters. So just to kind of again, see the impact of their work go back to the community. One of the forest projects was building bat and birdhouses for our school forest. So it's very cool because when our kids go through the forest, they can see again the work that they've done directly in there. In the summertime at summer school and SAC, I do a lot of STEAM challenges with the students. So again, just providing another enrichment opportunity. It really helps build those collaborative skills. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. So sometimes I try and pull one from each that can kind of experience all of those. I also do social, emotional activities groups. So if there's students that benefit from more direct target skill practice at a smaller setting, I pull them and work with them. For example, I'm doing like some friendship groups, peers that are just looking for some more connections in their daily life, I get to help them with that and facilitate that. And then for developing and maintaining positive relationships with caring adults, one of those pieces is the influence rangers. So that's why I'm the leader of that group. I love getting to meet with them. They truly have the best ideas. They just want to make Linwood a really wonderful place. And so it's fun to be able to have them a part of those activities and hear their voice. And then I also just provide tons of generalized support. So supporting, assisting students, teachers, really however I can. If I'm in a classroom, I want to make sure that, you know, I can handle, you know, the kids' needs as they come so that the teacher can just really focus on the teaching and the learning of it and I can handle the small stuff. And really I'm in the hallway, you know, at parent drop-off, greeting kids in the morning. I just try to really be that familiar face cheering them on, asking them about their weekends and all those pieces. And then? Oh, Ken. Oh, nope. There we go. Just some student quotes that have been shared in the past that I wanted to share with you guys of kind of what they've learned or gained from the program. And these are over, you know, the last few years. So some students say, you know, I've become a better person. It's helped them to accept themselves for who they are. They're proud of helping people in need, that it helped them with so much trauma. I love hearing it right from their words. My favorite one is, I now understand that parents and teachers are not always the bad guys. So like, we're winning there, right? I love the last one too. I got better at speaking in front of people, right? These are the opportunities right here that we are providing for those students, right? Who knows what they're going to do when they go to middle school next year and then high school. It was so cute, those girls were rehearsing over and over and over in that hallway and they got up here and they're like, wow, that actually wasn't that bad. Like, yes, you can do it. So giving them those opportunities to kind of overcome their nervousness, their fears and just build those competent, successful skills as they grow up. Any questions for me? Sorry, I hope that speedrun version was okay.
I didn't catch it. Are you also the PBIS or does Linwood have another PBIS here?
So Tanya is the PBIS. She's the behavior intervention session.
So you guys probably work kind of close together though. I mean, the work you do seems similar.
Yeah. So I kind of function and filter through Gretchen, Nathan, our counselor and Tanya. So obviously they handle the really need of the school stuff and then I'm just there as a support wherever I can help.
Are there any other of these grants at any of our other elementaries or are you guys the only one?
We're the only one currently. We are trying really hard to get another one. We'd love to expand it, but currently I'm the only one.
Well, it sounds really, really great.
How long does the grant run?
We reapply every three years. So we're secured right now through end of 2025 and then we reapply again and it goes from there. From what I've heard, we've had grants for quite some time. We don't see any reason that it should go away, so we're hoping just to continue the work, so.
Because that's an important role that you play and you get to really know the kids very well and for you to just, whoop, she's gone.
Yeah.
So I'm glad you're, it's like recyclable.
Yes, it helps three years to build those relationships. That's really the core of it.
Yes.
Are there opportunities for community members to volunteer and help out in ways that you can see available?
Yeah. So one of the things that will be starting pretty soon that Lake Center has connected, connected me for our career club with a lot of different people in professions that the kids are really passionate about. So we're hoping to have them come in and do a mini presentation to those students because it's always, you know, I can run through a PowerPoint and show them a video about a profession, but it's always so much more powerful hearing it from the person who's experienced that and has chosen that as their career. So those are kind of little ways we're looking to kind of bring in. Again, maple syruping, we're trying to bring in those connections. One of the service projects that we're hoping to do, a prior through a grant, we had a rain garden installed on the left side entrance of our elementary. And so the right side now is looking a little bare. So we're hoping to do some type of planting gardening project in the spring with another service group. And so I've connected with like the U of M Gardeners Association. They have like a whole really great unit that will come out and help our kids with it. So we're always looking for community connections and ways to connect kids with their community.
It's great. Do you have any questions?
I'd have to be there.
And thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, I feel like we have, we just got a lot of positive happenings, but do we have any other positive happenings that we would like to share?
I just would like to share one quick one since we are kind of like, we had so much positivity already, but I wanted to mention member Corbin and I went to Al Hoggie's visitation and he was a very devoted man with flaw and he took it to heart really providing funding and money for students that wanted to play in sports and make sure that any student could be involved in sports, no matter the cost. So he was a great guy. His motto was all about the kids and it was packed, the attendance there. So he will be dearly missed and I wanted to mention that. I just want to do a quick shout out to White Christmas. We didn't have any positive happenings on our agenda last week. So I just want to say that this was just an incredible undertaking by the Forest Department and the vocals and that acting and all the things were pretty incredible on this play. So I just want to give them a shout out and you'll have to go to the next play if you missed it because they're all very good. And it's wonderful to have our nice auditorium, everything's working, microphones. I'm sure there's needs, but it was a beautiful play to see. So thank you. I just want to mention too that SPEAK, the Our Substance Prevention Education Action Coalition net, and I have minutes from that. I won't go through that, but if you want any more information, they have some events coming up that they're wanting people to host at the tables. So let me know if you're interested in any more information on that. Oh, my last thing. Sorry, sorry.
No, I was going to mention that if you had.
Yes, this is my proud moment. Da, 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 drum roll. Here's our Cantory Choir that will be showcased in the opening session and under the direction of Mr. Gudry. And that's really to be the student talent at this youth conference is really, really tremendous. So I'm looking forward to that and I'm looking forward to seeing all of you there. So thank you.
On that note, Joy, if we're not signed up for that already, can we still get signed up or is that closed? Okay, if you could let us know later in the meeting, that would be great. No questions?
I just had one quick positive happening. I was at the fifth grade transition meeting on Monday night and maybe Dr. Manson will talk about that a little bit more. And I saw member Antonson there as well. It would look like a great turnout and Mr. Miller gave a good presentation and then the students, the fifth grade students and their parents were able to tour the middle school and look in the band room and check out some of the different instruments that they might want to play. But it looked like a great turnout, a successful evening.
Anybody else?
Remember Tyson's words about Al Hoggie, just a great member of our community and I was on flaw with him for many years. He really was, I said his laugh and his smile and he was just, he was infectious. He was just a really big personality and I was honored to know him. So I, we greatly missed. And then also the MSBA next week, I hope everyone can go because it's really, it's just, it just renews your commitment to other schools. I think it rejuvenates you and makes you feel proud to be there and get to know other people from other districts. It just, it's a very powerful experience. So I look forward to it every year. And then also I was with Gale at the White Christmas and it was, our talent is just amazing. Barry Zumbold had his kids in it, so that was pretty exciting for him to talk to them after the show. He feels so proud to have them there. So yeah, just a lot of great things happening for our district.
And on that topic of MSBA, we have our own district director here, member Tyson is our district director. So if you have any questions with MSBA, she's a great resource. Jill is still working frantically, so we'll get information if you're not signed up for that on how to get signed up for it later. Looks like that concludes positive happenings and due to the short proximity between board meetings, we do not have superintendent's report this week, so Dr. Manson is off the book. So from there we will move directly into the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything on the consent agenda they would like to be reading? Remember Antonson?
I'm just wondering if we can pull the 7.2, 7.3, and 7.4.
Yes. Are there any other items, 7.1 through 7.9, if anybody would like to pull? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve 7.1 through 7.9 with the exception of 7.2 through 7.4. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Hold an eye? Aye, aye. All those opposed? Okay, then. The ayes have it. 7.1 through 7.9 with the exception of 7.2 to 7.4 has been approved. 7.2, appointment of school district legal counsel. Dr. Manson, can you speak to this briefly?
I, I can't. These are all organizations, law firms that assist the district with legal matters. Dependent upon the specific legal matter and the question at hand, we may draw on different law firms to assist us with those legal matters. I've asked Director Friedman to maybe step forward and speak to each of these and their specific specialties that we use from time to time.
Okay. Good evening. So let's see, what can I tell you about these folks? The first three on the list, Rhett with Rosack, Maloney, Kennedy, Graven, Charter, and Squires, Walzberger, and Maze. All have our firms, they may be morphed over periods of time, but they are, they all deal with municipal issues, school issues, data issues, employment issues. These are some of the biggest, most well-known law firms in the metro area that school districts, especially of the metro area, use for counsel. Heitzman and Wald is a firm that focuses on benefits law, so insurances, employee benefits. So a very complex, highly specialized set of questions. And these, these also are people who you would look to pretty much every school district in the state and does some form of business with that law firm. Feist Law and Advocacy, we use them, have been using them for immigration issues. What do we do with immigration issues? We do have some staff members that we have been able to, we have a staff member who hails from the Philippines, who is here on a specific type of visa. We have a staff member who's a Chinese national, who is here on a different type of visa. So it requires, sometimes when a person does not have, depending upon the type of permission a person already has, additional action may be necessary. So that's the law firm that has been helping us with those sorts of things. And then finally, the Maslin firm is a business law firm and we work with them on a somewhat limited basis, but actually the attorney from the Maslin firm has made an appearance at this board some time ago, but it's with respect to districts liability insurance issues.
All right. I think that was very good. Does anybody have any questions?
These are ones we've always used, right? Is there anything different than the past?
Nope.
Yeah, I don't know what the issues are.
It really isn't an issue. I just was, you know, looking at the consent agenda, I just didn't have any idea of what these meetings meant. And I just thought maybe it would be, since, you know, my experience is that if I have a question, I'm probably not the only one. I mean, obviously except for previous board members, but for public community members, I thought it might be helpful for them to have a better understanding.
Okay, just curious.
Before we go into any discussion, I think we should entertain a motion here to approve 7.2 as presented. We have a motion in a second. With that, member Castle.
I was just going to point out that it would be helpful if those, what they do was next to their names. So those questions are already answered. Many things could be not questioned if somebody's name were just right out there for us.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Hold an aye? Aye, aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. That brings 7.3, appointment of school district doctor. Dr. Manson?
And as your chair, and Boyd, the district doctor, Dr. Keanu has been in that capacity for many, many years. It's a non-statement position. She doesn't grant us. It's just while not required as a district, it provides a medical point of contact when we have health notes from doctors that we're trained with totally. If we're presented with medical situations in schools, a point of contact for us to consult with to get clarity around those kind of issues. There is no cost to the district. They do not provide any, by need guidance around any type of medical issue, but it is a point of contact if we need clarification and assistance on medical related questions.
With that, let's start with a motion to approve the appointment of the school district doctor as presented.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
How often do you think in a year that you had to call on for interpretation or clarification of something? And if you have had those, does the district run any risk of this doctor misinterpreting or not correctly interpreting any doctor's note from the student?
Yeah, I would, to first answer the second part of that question, it really is about trying to just give us information for us to work with our registered nursing staff on hand. If the information is providing a conflict, we'd reach out to the medical professional or the parents who are bringing a medical note. I would say in any given year, there are probably years we don't reach out at all. There are years where maybe it's once or twice where we reach out with questions. It's, it's not all that.
Any other questions or comments on this topic? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, aye. All those opposed? All right, 7.4, appointment of fiscal consultants. Sorry, Dr. Manson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, these are law understanding associations and firms that assist us with financial matters with respect to districts required audits and so on. Director Renberg, Heidi works directly with these organizations and consultants and she can provide even more detail.
Thank you very much. Our PME Financial works with all of our cash flow and our investments. They also are the ones that hold all of our construction bond money. And so we work through them to make sure that Fund Six flows through in the correct manner. Ailers and Associates is our municipal advisors and so we work with them on selling all of our bonds that we would sell, any levy information that we have. You've seen their name already. LTFM planning and then all of our school facility work.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, with that, could we entertain a motion? All right, with that, could we entertain a motion for the appointment of fiscal consultants as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments?
I appreciate everybody's clarifying things from the question.
And similar, it could be said right there, what their services are.
All right. Okay, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, 7.4 passes as presented. With that, we will move to the routine action items very briefly. I got an open joy here. Registration for MSBA conference did close, but there may be an opportunity. So if you're early registered, just please reach out to Joy and we'll get that taken care of. All right, so approval of routine action items, this is always the kind of chaotic point in the meeting, so we're trying to work through that chaos a little bit. We'll go through points 8.1 through 8.8 and approve the bundle as a package unless there's an objection to that. If not, we'll start working through 8.1. Okay, that seems to be enable. So 8.1 is appoint representatives to MSBA. In 2024, this was Members Corcoran and Member Redline. I'll start with a suggestion and then we can discuss it from there. But I would discuss, or I would suggest that Member Corcoran and Member Tyson fulfill these roles this year. Is that amenable?
Sure.
Sure.
We can have as many as three on all of these if there's somebody who would like to step in to that. All right, seeing none, we'll move to Minnesota State High School League. Minnesota State High School League was represented in 2024 by Member Corcoran, Member Hagland, and Member Redline. My suggestion would be that those three members remain.
Yeah, I would like to.
All right. Then we will move on to the item number three here, schools advocating for fair funding. The remaining member that was a representative in 2024 is Member Tyson. I would recommend that she remain on and that Member Castle join her. We do have a third spot if anyone would like to join that. All right. Moving on to the city of Forest Lake, 2024, Member Christensen and Member Tyson represented the school board there. I would recommend they continue that.
Yes, thank you.
Member Tyson?
Yes, sounds good.
All right. The next group is the Special Ed Advisory Council. The remaining member that represented last year was Member Tyson. I would recommend Member Tyson remain on that. She has a great background in special ed and I think it's a benefit. I would also recommend that Members Antonson and Member Redline join her. Seeing no objections to that, we'll move on to the Community Ed Advisory Council. Remaining board member that represented last year was Member Christensen. I would recommend that she remain on that and Member Hagland join her. All right, this is, the next group is the Agriculture Ed Advisory Board. 2024 assignments included Member Hagland. In 2025, I'm recommending Member Antonson and Member Castle. All right. The next group here is the Emergency Services and Health Careers Advisory Board. How appropriate for this evening. We don't have any board members that were on that assignment last year that have carried over. I'm recommending Member Antonson fulfill that role this year. And if anybody would like to join her, please raise your hand.
Based on that conversation tonight, I would like to.
Member Hagland, we have room for one more? All right, so seeing no other suggestions there, we just covered a lot from 8.1 to 8.8. I would entertain a motion to approve the representative, the representatives as presented during the discussion. All right, and a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, 8.1 through 8.8 has been approved. That will bring us to item 8.9. Item 8.9 is the appointment to our 916, here in the school district. Member Tyson's just completed the second half of the four-year term. I hope I got that correct. Thank Member Tyson for her service to 916. I'm recommending that Member Redline take the next term on that. Is there any, if there's no opposition to that, I would entertain a motion to fulfill the 916 school board position with Member Redline.
So moved. Just want to add that that meeting is next Wednesday.
I saw that.
On the 15th at 6:00 p.m., it'll be their organizational meeting.
Yes. All right. Thank you so much, Member Tyson, for your representation with that board. And we will be meeting to talk about transition shortly here. Any other discussion on that? All right, Member Clark, would you please take a roll call on this one?
I took a vote. I'm sorry. You can go down there.
So we're taking a roll call vote to?
To approve the last, to appoint, to approve the, yes, to approve the appointment of Member Redline to the 916 school board. An aye would be to affirm the appointment and no would be to, or against the appointment.
So, Member Christensen?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Redline?
Aye.
Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Hagland?
Aye.
Member Antonson?
Aye.
Member Castle?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
That brings us to 8.10, appoint district superintendent or designate and school board chair and vice chair to engage legal counsel. Dr. Massey?
Yeah, we at least just previously approved the various legal firms that we work with. This was amended, I believe, last June to approve the vice chair as well. I think that's good practice and administration would recommend approval.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, the ayes have it. 8.11, designate official school newspaper. Dr. Massey?
Yeah, with the only weekly circulation that we have at Forest Lake, Forest Lake Times, they've really done a remarkable job for us. We have legal requirements for policy amendments and of course agendas and meeting notices. They are really professional in their efforts and their work, so administration would certainly recommend approval.
So moved.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the ayes have it. 8.12, school board committee assignments, please see in your packet the assignments. I can read through them quickly. For the five o'clock committee, I have Buildings and Grounds, Member Hagland and Member Antonson. Curriculum Instruction and Equity, Member Tyson and Member Castle. Staff Welfare, Member Corcoran and Member Christensen. The 6:00 p.m. community times, Communications, Member Tyson and Member Corcoran. The Finance Committee, Member Hagland and Member Castle. Member Castle, I will note as treasurer is required attendee in that committee. The Policy Committee, Member Christensen and Member Antonson. And for the astute viewers, I will point out that I'm a Redline myself and it's not been assigned to any specific committees. Instead, I will float to fill board member absences or to attend certain committees during times of like a high urgency to have more board member representation in such a group. With those recommendations, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I totally didn't catch me, sir.
Yes, I'm sorry. I may have gone through there quickly. Five o'clock committees, Buildings and Grounds, Member Hagland and Member Antonson. Curriculum Instruction and Equity, Member Tyson and Member Castle. Staff Welfare, Member Corcoran and Member Christensen. Six o'clock committees, Communications, Member Tyson and Member Corcoran. Finance, Member Hagland and Member Castle. Policy, Member Christensen and Member Antonson. And as previously discussed, Member Redline will float between the various committees. Yes, and that information is in the packet that was provided. Any other discussion?
I do have a discussion point.
Yes.
So we did have a conversation about the floating aspect to the board chair position?
Yes.
And since that's new, could you give an example of what you mean as to which a high need reason to have extra board members in a committee?
Sure, sure. The one that immediately comes to mind is we just did our truth in taxation in December, we approved the financial audit. So that would be one where we may want to have extra board member representation within finance. I can think of another example where we had a number of absences just a few months ago where board members on Buildings and Grounds were unable to attend Buildings and Grounds. And that would give us the opportunity to have, we've had the flexibility in the board to still have representation at that committee. So that's the idea behind it. It's kind of a trial, see if it works. And if not, we can make an adjustment.
Thank you for that.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That brings us to action items, action item 9.1, approve the 2025 legislative platform. Dr. Massey?
8.13?
Oh, I am sorry, MS 8.13. I checked it off. I, okay, so 8.13, school board liaisons. I only have notes on this one because I have a, I have a personal suggestion on this one. I'd like to bring it to the board for consideration. Typically, in a normal year, we assign board members liaisons to certain buildings, to certain different programs within the district. Into some discussion with board members and with administration this year, especially considering a topic that we'll be discussing shortly about the elementary school boundary adjustments. It felt like an appropriate time to recognize the fact that we are all liaisons for every one of our buildings and every one of our programs. And especially in a time where we're looking at elementary school boundaries adjustments, it seems appropriate that we don't have any assigned liaison positions, but we are liaisons of all of our buildings. So the motion here that I would entertain would be to discontinue assigned building liaisons for the calendar year 2025. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Remember Tyson, yes?
So my only thinking with your proposed idea is that, you know, there could be buildings that get missed. So how do we know who's been where and when they've been there? And I think the reason for appointing them is so that all of our elementary buildings and secondary get kind of touched with that connection, so they can reach out to being in the building, being seen. So how do we, what's your idea for kind of keeping track of that?
That is an excellent question. And you have much more years of service as a board member than I do, so I'd love your input on this. I know in my last few years, I just reached out to principals directly and given them the support that they needed, depending on the situation they've been in. Whether I've been a liaison in that building or not, I personally don't see that changing for me, but I would love to hear the input of other board members on that one.
I mean, I think we've always been able to or have the ability to go to any building we want for, like you said, contacting the principal and attending meetings or events there. But my question is more, how do we know who's getting missed if nobody's assigned anywhere? Does that make sense?
Well, I believe that the members in the different buildings would be able to reach out to any of us. And perhaps if we were, for instance, I'm a geek, so if they wanted to talk about their networks or any of that kind of stuff, I wouldn't, I have no problem. I'm gonna, I'm well versed in that kind of stuff. So if somebody else was not very comfortable with that, but somebody approached them, then they could say, oh, they approached me with this. Would you look into that? And I would, I would be happy to take that on. So as Member Redline said, we are all the liaisons, but we all have different strengths. So I think it would be appropriate for the person with the most strength in an area that is being asked of us, for that person to handle that particular situation.
You bring up a good point, but I think that in the past, I've referred things to board members if I've been asked, you know?
True.
If it were medical, I would refer it to TESSA or to the district office. But my question is, how do we know what buildings are getting visited and are getting that connection with a board member? Because we rotate them.
Well, the whole, this whole position is to really build a relationship with the PTOs and staff. And so that's why that designate a person is that person that builds a relationship. I mean, anyone can go to any building, but that's not what this is. I mean, if they had a question, they would reach out to districts or Dr. Massey or questions like that. They're not going to reach out to us regarding things that are in their everyday school. I mean, the principals aren't going to reach out to us with questions about their own buildings. But this is just to build relationships with PTOs and to be that face with them. So that's why it is important to have designated people, because it does change. And not everybody can, that's why it's nice to have too, because, I mean, everybody has busy lives. I mean, you're not going to be able to go to every meeting or things like that. During COVID, of course, didn't get to many buildings at all. But that, I think, is super important to keep that relationship going with the people that are designated. It doesn't mean you couldn't attend if something interested you and you wanted to go, that's great. But I think it's important to keep some structure with those buildings.
I agree.
Member Hagland? I know I've reached out over the past couple of years to the buildings I've been a liaison to, and I get a wider response. Some principals like having come in, others are very hands off and say, oh, I'm glad I'll reach out if you need anything. So I don't hear from them. I think the one, you know, like Member Corcoran said about the PTOs is good, but then if I'm on a building that has PTO meetings, same as a school board meeting, I never get to be there anyway. So, or there's, you know, same thing with some of the other councils. So I can see both sides of it, but I do think that not having an assigned liaison gives me a little bit more freedom to go to a PTA meeting of any school or go visit with a principal of many schools. So I don't think it's going to hurt to try it and see how it works.
Anybody?
Well, I would just add then, I think at some point we should consider how we could log it or how we could report on it. So we, we know that, you know, nobody has been to Lionel Lakes for the school year, for half the school year. I don't know where your thoughts are on that. Or we could log or keep track or communicate some.
I mean, just to attend the special events like the Turkey Bingo and their carnivals and different events like the arts events and things like that, that is also the role kind of of that person too. So it's important, it's like I said, build relationships, be there and show up. And you know that that's your design, I mean, you could go to other schools, but it's just nice to know that you have a home, like a homeschool to go to. Whether you can make a meeting or not, it's still to build relationships. So I don't know how we keep track of that. That's a good point. So.
Anybody else have any comments? I echo many of the same concerns that all the members here brought up. I do think it's important to maybe try this, especially as we're talking about the new boundary issue here. But I would certainly entertain a motion to amend my motion to not the calendar year of 2025, but until of 2025, but until, say, July, and we can readdress this for the next school year.
I would make that motion if you wanted to try something different, Redline, for the end of the school year, and then we can reevaluate it at that time.
We have a motion in a second. All right, any discussion on the amendment to shorten it from calendar year 2025 to essentially the remainder of the school year? Member Haglund?
So I would suggest, I like that idea. That way we can just finish out the school year and not lose that continuity and just fill in Board members who have fallen off with two newly elected Board members.
Oh, okay, so that, that actually is completely different than, than my amendment. My amendment was that we would discontinue liaisons for the rest, for the remainder of the school year. But your interpretation is fine too, so I have.
I'm sorry, I. I'm showing the amendment in the executive.
I, I meant what Mr. Redline just said.
Right, in the executive.
Yeah.
And Member Haglund's suggestion is amiable to me as well. If the Board would prefer that solution where we have the assigned liaisons for the remainder of the school year, as Member Haglund suggested, my recommendation would be that we vote against the amendment. We vote against the original motion. Member Haglund presented his suggestion as the next motion, and we will do discussion on that.
Could you repeat what you said, Member Haglund?
I would just, I misunderstood Member Christensen's amendment. I thought it meant to keep the School Board liaisons through the end of the school year and then readdress it after the school year. So I apologize, I misinterpreted, but.
Do you want the amendment?
Yeah, I'll pull that amendment for now, and then we can readdress it.
Yeah, we don't have an amendment, we have an amendment. So, if we don't have any more discussion on the amendment, let's, let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, no. Amendment fails. Okay, now the original motion, the original motion to discontinue School Board member liaisons. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
No.
No. Okay, that motion fails. I would now entertain a motion to retain School Board member liaisons through the remainder of this school year.
So, nice.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, so now we will go through the assignments as a single amendment. This, this will be kind of a little messy here, but we'll go through it. So Columbus Elementary, right now, we have Members Corcoran and Member Redline. I'm okay with those two members. I would also recommend Member Castle join Columbus. Forest Lake and Forest View Elementary, remaining member is Member Tyson. Would anybody like to join, Member Tyson and Member Corcoran? Okay. Then we have Lionel Lakes Elementary. We have Member Tyson, 2024. Would anybody like to join, Member Tyson at Lionel? We can have as many as three. Anybody else would like to join? All right. Linwood Elementary, we have Members Haglund and Member Redline. I'll actually recommend that Member Redline be removed from that and Member Antonson join. All right. Scandia Elementary, we have Members Christensen, Member Haglund, and Member Redline. Okay, we will carry forward with those three. Wyoming Elementary, we have Members Corcoran and Member Haglund. Anybody like to join? All right. Community School, we have Member Tyson. Would anybody like to join, Member Tyson at that community school? Okay. And Member Castle will join.
I'd like to join that one too.
And Member Antonson. Okay, that brings us to the Education Center. We have Members Christensen and Member Tyson. And Middle School, we have Member Christensen. Would anybody like to join, Member Christensen?
I'd like to join. And I would too.
Member Tyson and Member Corcoran. Yes, and you two know what you're getting into? Okay, the High School, we have Member Redline. Would anybody like to join, Member Redline? Is it Member Tyson? All right. At Transportation Office, we have Member Corcoran. Would anybody like to join the Transportation Office? Member Haglund? And then the Step Program, we have Member Redline. Would anybody like to join, maybe with Step? Member Christensen? Okay, are there any questions on the assignments that we just went over? Joy, were you able to capture all of them? All right, so the motion is to approve the assignments as we just discussed. Through the end of the school year. Correct. So you have a motion in a second again. All those in favor, go ahead and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Thank you, Dr. Massey, for correcting us on building liaisons. Now, that brings us to nine point one, approve the legislative agenda. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The 2025 legislature convenes on January fourteenth. They will be entering the biennial two-year cycle as a legislature, which means that this will be the year they set the next two-year biennial budget for the state. So this is the budget. The second year is the bonding year. They can do supplemental bills, but it's typically the bonding year. We always or historically have brought forward and have received Board approval on a legislative agenda that would guide my efforts and staff's efforts to lobby legislators on behalf of district needs. It certainly provides guidance for Board members to engage in that level of legislative lobbying activity as well. And it's extremely valuable and powerful to have staff, Board members, and for that matter, community members advocating on behalf of the items that we would identify tonight and approve as a Board. Administration would be recommending that we continue with our longstanding effort around transportation sparsity. Through our efforts over the last fifteen years or more, we have moved transportation sparsity from zero funding around the transportation sparsity to an initial increase of eighteen percent of districts' deficit around transportation. We continued our efforts on this topic, and two years ago, we were able to get an increase from eighteen percent, covering that cross subsidy, to thirty-five percent. That's what it's at today. I'm proposing that we lobby around trying to get that number moved to at least seventy percent, ideally a hundred percent, but things don't work that way with the legislature. They incrementally make improvements, as you can see historically with, with this issue of our transportation sparsity. Not to get into too deep into the weeds, but we all understand that it's the result of being a large geographic district. The state funds transportation based on the, the number of kids enrolled in the district, regardless of the miles the district drives. I'll share a startling statistic. Our buses drive the equivalent of Key West to Anchorage every day in this district, and we get reimbursed on the number of kids in our district. There are districts that drive the equivalent of Duluth to Minneapolis, need the same funding. It is unjust and it's unfair. So we need to continue to lobby around this issue. So that would be our first item that Administration would recommend that we continue to fight for and lobby for. The second item would be to address the shortfall related to her people funding. We know that over the last year, inflation was well beyond three, four percent. That hits not just homes, but school districts as well. In 2023, the legislature indexed per pupil funding to inflation using the CPI, Consider Price Index. But they put a floor on that number at two percent and a ceiling at three percent. Currently, CPI is at above, between, hovering between two point four, two point five, two point six. We'll set that here in January. So based on the CPI at that time, we'll get our funding indexed for the upcoming school year. The, the good news there is we typically don't know our school funding, per pupil funding, which is our largest source of, of revenue for the district until the legislature adjourns. That can be June, July, special session, maybe even later. It allows us to do our budget work. So we're very grateful for the fact that we know that number in January as we begin our staffing and our budget work. But if it falls at two point four percent, I would advocate for the Board here and recommend that we advocate around moving that, getting the legislature to increase wherever that lands up to three, a full three percent. We know the costs have increased across the board. The inflationary number has not kept pace with inflation over many, many years. So a minimum of three percent would be Administration's recommendation. And then lastly, you'll see on the third item, I indicate fully funding 2023 mandates. The legislature did provide record funding for schools, but a lot of that funding was tied to mandates. And you can see three critical ones here. And the first one being the nutrition program, where free meals are provided for all kids, breakfast and lunch. And I frankly think that that's a very, very valuable thing for kids who struggle getting meals and who threw right at home, don't fill out the free and reduced price lunch forms, and those kids go without meals. That has been solved for those families. So I think there's great value there. But it is expensive, as you can imagine. And if the state is going to provide it, we would advocate that the state fund it rather than go back on that funding and expect districts to do that. Secondly, there would be to, actually, that's the second one. The first one here would be to fully fund the summer unemployment. So employees that work nine months are not eligible for unemployment in the summer months. The state initially put a hundred and thirty-five million to that, I'm looking at my colleagues to verify that number, to cover a three-year cost statewide. We believe that after the second year, that money's been depleted. This summer, we will be providing unemployment at district costs if it's not continuing to be funded at the state. So we are advocating that keep that provision that they fund it. And then thirdly, that they continue to provide and hold harmless kids in districts while compensatory education. Previously, that was indexed or tied to eligibility around free and reduced price lunch. I spoke just a minute ago about the difficulty getting families to fill out that form. So two years ago, they gave me a direct certification of eligible kids, which, which gave a very, a much more accurate number of potential eligibility for those services. And there's direct funding that comes with eligible and qualified kids. So there's conversation currently that the legislature is going to step back from direct certification. And that will be a significant budget shortfall for our district and districts in this state. So with those legislative agenda recommendations, Administration would recommend.
We entertain a motion to approve as presented. Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Just one quick question for the superintendent. Under the transportation sparsity allowance, was there any reason why you left out the thirty-five to seventy percent or you left the percentages out? I mean, I'm sure there's good rationale, but it's curious.
Four years ago, I was on the school finance, statewide school finance task force. While I lobbied there on that task force to address school funding issues, I lobbied for a hundred percent. The committee settled on seventy percent. So it, it allows us to continue to be consistent with the recommendation coming out of that committee. We'll certainly lobby for a hundred percent. But our bill would be for seventy percent. That's been the case the last two years, and like I said, we moved from eighty percent to thirty-five percent. So it's a high bar that we're asking for at the very least, and if we were to get that, frankly, it would be a miracle.
Absolutely. I would imagine if you push too hard, then they push back harder.
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah. And, and I think we've all seen the budget forecast. They spent nineteen billion dollars the last session, seventeen or nineteen, I forget the number. And we're going to pay the price moving forward, and those resources are not there in the out years. There's a surplus this year, six hundred and some million, but in the long range forecast, those dollars aren't there. So if we ask for a hundred percent, they'll look at us and say, money's not there. So it's down on the line.
And I just want to add for the new Board members that we did write a resolution that was included into the MSBA's legislative platform for this same transportation.
Number Tyson, did MSBA settle on a number or were they open like this proposal here?
I think the way we wrote it or read it at, on the floor of the delegation was, had the percentages in there.
I think it was seven, seventy percent.
Thirty, to raise it from thirty-five to seventy.
I do like the leaving it open-ended to give Dr. Massey a little bit more flexibility, especially as he serves community legislators. And we remain consistent with the message that it's needed, but if we need to peel back to fifty percent, fifty's still better than thirty-five. So I, I personally like the flexibility there.
Makes sense.
And we do have a legislative breakfast Monday morning at seven thirty a.m. where all of our local legislators are coming to the district to get our presentation approved tonight, as well as other important topics facing the district.
And when is that? When, when did you say this?
Seven thirty Monday morning.
Okay. And the legislative session starts the fourteenth.
The fourteenth, yeah.
And then MSBA will have a day at the Capitol where we can all go meet with our representatives and lobby for what's on our platform.
Any other discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And legislative platform is approved. That brings us to nine dot two, a resolution directed to Superintendent and Administration to make recommendations for reductions in positions, programs, and services and reasons therefore for twenty-five, twenty-six. Dr. Massey?
This is a routine item. This is not a suggestion of cuts up, will be made, it's routine work for us as we enter our staffing work. So each one of district administration and principals have a series of meetings, weekly long meetings to review projected student enrollment, teacher retirements, resignations, leaves and the end leaves of absences, programs and services, anticipated class sizes, staffing levels, and the projected budget and finances for the next school year. To begin this process, the School Board would adopt the following resolution in front of you that would give us permission to consider reductions in positions if necessary through this process. Administration would recommend.
With that, I would entertain a motion to approve as presented. All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it? Item nine dot three, elementary school attendance boundary adjustments. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ultimately, Administration is looking for School Board direction on this work tonight. And so let me give you a little bit of background. You'll remember in August, we had a conversation here around remapping 2025. I know Members Castle and Antonson were paying attention to that conversation at the same time. time. The first phase, if you will, of we imagine 2025 was related to the movement of sixth grade to middle school and the consolidation of Forest Lake Elementary and Forest View. That work was approved, or those items were approved. That work has been taking place throughout the district. In fact, we just had, as we mentioned earlier, the first phase of, the first step in the movement of sixth graders to the middle school with the open halls Monday, Tuesday, and the final one this Thursday. So that work is well underway. You'll recall that the final slide of that presentation in August, and revisited when we were seeking formal approval, was the piece around the current operating levy, number one. And the second was to consider adjustments to elementary boundaries. That ties back to Hazel Reinhardt's demographic study and analysis of housing growth and developments, where the projection was growth at Lina Lakes, a bit of growth at Lindwood, steady enrollment at Wyoming, steady enrollment at Columbus, a bit of declining enrollment in their city schools, Forest Lake and Forest View, and significant reduction, especially with the movement of sixth grade to the middle school at Scandia. Scandia is projected to be at 200, maybe less enrollment in the next five years, if, just primarily due to shifting housing growth and population over the last number of years. We have not done a boundary change in over a dozen years as a district. And while this is fairly routine work in some districts, we have not done that work. And in order for us to sustain, as this board discussed, administration also holds the value of the strength of our community-based elementary schools, in order to strengthen our community-based elementary schools across the district, we believe we're at that time where we need to begin to consider and build a model for elementary boundary adjustments. So administration would be seeking your direction tonight to engage in that work. And if we're directed as such tonight, I would come back next week at the mid-month meeting with a bit more detail about what that work will entail and what the timeline and process will be.
With that, I would entertain a motion to direct administration to proceed with research and modeling of the shift in elementary school boundaries. Second. All right, any discussion?
As you engage in discussion, I left out a critical piece. While it is yet to be determined, we would do this work with our eyes toward the 26, 27 school year. So this would not be a district shift. At least, our initial consideration and understanding of this work is we would not be doing this work with a proposal for the next school year. It would be a year, year and a half.
All right, number hangman.
So my one ask, administration while you start this work is to, and I mentioned back in August or whenever we first talked about this as buffer zones or gray zone, I would like to see the elementary school balanced class size-wise. So whatever that entails is just to look and have the statisticians and the specialists look at what, how large would these buffer zones have to be? How would they think that they might have to shift annually to continue having that balanced classroom size at all the elementarys?
Perhaps project that a little into the future so we don't have to look at this again real shortly.
Yeah, I think there's great value in being nimble, but also giving families predictability.
Right, yes.
How does this work with this Spanish immersion that's at just, you know, limited, limited level, several schools? And then, because we kind of have that issue right now. I mean, how does that play into this?
Yeah, I think that would be a month's worth for us to consider. And just to give you a little bit of background in the work, we'll need, if we proceed down this path, we'll need to do another enrollment analysis and housing analysis as well. Because it's that data that feeds their analytic tool. The analytic tool is what identifies pinned on a map where our families live and where kids live, and whether they attend charter school or homeschool or immersion. And that, those tools are, that tool is essential for us to be able to identify if we move this neighborhood or this section of the district to a different school, how many kids does that move? So that's, that's the depth of the analytical work.
I've been on the boundary change committee before, many years ago when it got very heated. It's a very sensitive, very, it's a hard thing to move families out of their own business. So I just know that we're going to be very, you know, we're going to look really cautious and really big long-term and not do a bunch of shifts for families. I really think we need to, once we shift somewhat, I don't want to be shifting them every two years. I mean, that is also problematic. So I know that we're going to do our diligence to make sure that we keep it, you know, it's not as much changes as, you know, as we can just to make it be balanced. I know it's not an easy task.
Do the analytics have the information for where these students that are being shipped from different places because of these special programs? Does it include, like if we move this area, there's seven people, seven students in that area that will be affected by a STEM program or an immersion program? Does it include that data?
It will certainly identify, for instance, families that attend Scandia, which is IP, or Lina Lakes that has a STEM program. So we certainly identify those families for those special programs. We'll also identify students on IEPs and kids that are getting very specialized service at a unique neighborhood school or maybe bused to a program at a different school. So it'll identify all of those different variables that are really critical to balancing schools that serve in our families.
I was going to ask about special adding, you just kind of answered it. And that's all-inclusive for every special add student on IEP throughout the district, right? That data and analytics will work with that as well. Because when you look, and also when you look at Hazel Reinhardt's, that'll be going on four years old. So we definitely will need new housing evaluation for this.
Yeah, I think her data is probably one and a half to three years old, but there's a lot of shifting.
By the end of 27, it will be. Because she did it in 20.
Yeah, projected out.
Yeah.
But there's, there's a lot of housing development that is just coming online that she didn't have access to.
Right.
So it'll be useful from that standpoint.
Right. So I'd say we'll have the want to compare, but we definitely need that second evaluation.
Yeah, they can't do, they can't create the analytic tool. Unique to Forest Lake without that data.
Okay, there was data that was presented April or May last year. That doesn't include that information?
No, so that was Hazel Reinhardt's study. And she does not do the mapping, boundary analytics. So there are other firms that do that. TeamWorks is one that we're familiar with and have had some initial conversation. They've got elaborate sophisticated tools to do this, but they need the data to enter into it.
And superintendent, one quick question. Sorry, no original. Will you bring forward the costs involved or are there significant costs involved?
There's certainly a cost if we work with TeamWorks.
TeamWorks, I mean.
As a consultant. But you pay for the specialty.
Right.
That is a unique specialty that they would provide. We'll certainly have that cost, and I can have that next week when I use that.
Just had a question. I think if I understand it correctly, and I know this would not work for every single family, but we're talking about moving the busing lines, right? So let's say you had a neighborhood school that you just loved and you had the ability, you could still drive your kids to your neighborhood school. Is that correct? It just, you wouldn't be able to get the bus?
Well, no decision is made yet. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I frankly can't imagine doing this work and not providing that option. That ultimately would be a board decision as well.
I just, if we're consider, I just wanted to reassure families that obviously not every family can do that. I'm just saying if there's some families that are able to do that, hopefully we would allow them to be able to do that, understanding it could be a burden for some families. Trying to balance the schools too. So priority, we're moving it because of balancing, then that kind of defeats the whole purpose. They drive their kids. I mean, you know, right?
So that data would have to be included in the analytics.
Yeah. And the analytics will give us a variable. Typically, I think the number, 30% of families elect us to drive their kids and openly go to their current school. So that then helps us with the actual numbers of kids that might move. So that's part of the analytic tool.
Any more? Number three.
One quick question to the superintendent. So we already allow parents to do that, correct? So that was what you were saying is that?
We currently uphold that practice periodically at a great level. At a certain school might be really full and won't close in district transfer to that school. But that's only based on staffing and where we kind of cap that rate level for in-district transfer. But yes, we do accommodate across the district.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Okay, I think based on the discussion that I heard tonight, it's important to point out that this initial directive to administration is to start the process, to get the wheels moving. And there's going to be a lot of discussion that happens tangential to this, this specific directive. We already talked about things like immersion and STEM and the gray area type boundaries. All of those, those things are open for discussion at a later point. This is just giving administration the directive to start that process, to start that work, to maybe engage not a board committee, subcommittee, but an internal administrative committee to begin that research work. So I just want that to be clear before we move into a vote. But unless there's other discussion, we can do that now. All right, seeing none, all those in favor? All those say aye? All those opposed? All right, the ayes, we have it. That brings us to 9.4, request permission to build technology needs. Let's see, Director Jacobson, who's representing this one tonight?
We're going to tag Teamit. So if you need JP, he'll answer the technical questions.
All right.
So you might remember, and for the new people, last February, we came and talked about E-Rate, the opportunity for us to get grant funding for 60% of the projects that we do in our technology area for certain different types of technology in our infrastructure. And so tonight, we're here to ask to go out and get bids for some of our remaining schools. So we were able to complete that work last year based on the bid. And then based on budget, we would do that. We're not quite sure that it's going to reach the $175,000 threshold that this bid requires, but it could if we did all the schools. And again, likelihood of that may be not great, but we're still going to be proactive and get your permission to bid it before we put out that form for the E-Rate funding. So that would be what we'd be asking for tonight.
Okay, so just to point a clarification, putting one there, we have a policy in place that gives administration the ability to enter into contracts that are below $175,000. If a contract exceeds that amount, they need to come to the board for approval. Director, your idea is communicating with us tonight is it might not reach that number, but they're asking for approval tonight. Anyway, did I capture that correctly? Okay, if so, then I would entertain a motion to accept or to approve the request permission to bid technology needs.
Want to approve 9.4?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any questions? Remember Castle?
Being a geek, I use open source software and Libra Office is free. You don't have to pay Microsoft tax, and it's a big release of burden on everyone who does not have to do that. So I would recommend, for instance, Devian has a Scolio Linux platform, Ubuntu has a embedded Ubuntu, and they are platforms for education. And their Libra Office is just one, but there's also Open Office, but many of the developers didn't like the licensing, so they started Libra Office. And Libra Office is actually better currently than that. And I don't use Microsoft. I only do everything that I want to with open source software. So I would highly recommend to look into platforms that are open source and either free or less cost.
Yeah. This particular proposal would be for networking, infrastructure and networking. So it'd be switches, access points, battery backups. That would be the majority of this particular project. However, I remember Castle, you and I have already had some connection and you're deep background in this area. So perhaps what you and I could do is sit down some time and kind of explore some of those ideas in terms of the software end of things, and we could really learn a little bit from you and dig into those a bit more. Yeah, let's see if we get something on the calendar.
All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? The motion passes. That brings us to 9.5, authorized request for proposals for employee group self-insured medical insurance.
Thank you. The Minnesota Health Insurance Transparency Act requires district to solicit proposals for their medical minimum every 24 months. And so the district employee benefits committee has been leading up to this moment to do that. So we're at our timeframe to do that in our second year. And so therefore, the committee's recommended that we go out and get our RFPs. The timeline for that is we will look to get the receipt of the RFPs on February 4th by NIS. They do, with request for proposals versus bidding, they do have some time to work with companies to ensure that we get the best pricing and kind of work through those proposals and make sure that they know the information well. And so again, that'd come back to us mid-February and look at those. And then by April, we'd be able to make a recommendation to the board. So it's a kickoff process to get the board to say, yes, we need to do this. And again, it's part of the hit of requirements.
Lots of kickoff processes this evening. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion, any questions?
I just hope they go back.
We are very hopeful. Last time we did have one bid, so we are hoping for multiple bids. That's our, yes. Four or more is our goal.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? The question is, have the proposals is approved. That brings us to item 10.1, a first reading, just for the new board members, the first reading. This is not the point where we take action on policy. This is more to bring it to the awareness of the board, bring it to the awareness of the community. We'll take action on this in a future meeting, but if you have any questions, by all means, it's appropriate to ask them. With that lengthy preamble, Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this policy is to set forth the provisions that must be followed when school district staff members administer non-emergency and emergency prescription medication to students at school. There is quite a bit of added and adjusted language in this policy. I would ask you to take a close look at between now and next month when we bring it to you for approval. There's changes with respect to the administration of medication. The exclusion to the administration procedures is listed as well as new language. There's also language, new language with respect to the administration of EpiPens and the ability for, or the permission for kids to not only carry but apply their own sunscreen. So those are some highlights in terms of the changes with this policy. No action tonight. No action tonight.
Thank you. That brings us to ten dot two, again, another first reading of policy. This one is the technology acceptable use and safety policy, number five forty. Director Massey.
Thank you. Earlier tonight, I mentioned the 2023 legislative session that was very active with respect to schools. One of the things they also put in place in the 2023 legislation, legislature, is legislation around cell phone use in schools and the requirement that districts develop a policy. So that language is now included in this policy. Please take a look at that and reach out if you have questions.
All right. That brings us to the newly added item ten dot three, to direct administration to provide a presentation of the achievement and integration plan to the board at the January 16th board meeting. I would entertain a motion to accept that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Number Tyson.
Number Chair?
Yes.
If someone would clarify the need for this to be on tonight's agenda? Because I'm wondering if they, the new members have one, have a presentation that we already have, and they know that we will be having one. So curious why we need this now.
Well, I can speak to that since I made the motion to do. The last presentation that we got on achievement and integration plan was the one curriculum committee meeting in November. My hope would be that administration would bring that data back to the full board to share, especially with the new members, so they can get an idea of both the fiscal side of things and the financial side of things. I have personally, I would like to see an inclusive report on this going back to the entire duration of our NIS, we look at our program, how it's done, how it's served our students, how it's served our district. When I initially got the request about learning more about the achievement integration plan, that was part of why I thought it was appropriate to bring it to the full board sooner rather than later. So that was my intent behind making the motion earlier tonight. Certainly, I know the board members that they have ideas to share their ideas on this as well.
So I just have one more question. So you're saying that the November presentation at the Curriculum Equity Committee, that's what you want brought next?
Yes, except that was the statutory requirement for each year. So that really only gave us the knowing how things were performing. I believe, I hope I'm misputting this, was that for the school year and maybe in 23? Yeah, so it was a very small snapshot at how the plan has served the district, and I would like to see something a little bit more inclusive. Number Jacobson, you guys, Director Jacobson. Oh, it was last year's. Okay, thank you. Thank you for correcting me on that.
So that's what I'm getting at, you're looking for something more elaborate.
Yes.
As you did mention at one point, going back how many years from?
So with my initial directive or motion, I didn't want to be prescriptive on the number of years, primarily because I don't know how accessible some of this data is to current administration. I don't want to hamstring them and say I want to stay everything from 2011 until today because the statistics just might not be available to them. But I would think five, ten years would be reasonable. But I'd like to leave that up to Director Jacobson and his team to really, really analyze data, see what's available that he can present to the board.
Lady for that, if I can ask, Mr. Chair, that guidance is helpful for us as we get all that information together. What else would you ask us to run next week?
So my initial thought on that is I'd like to see the dollars that we invest into the program and how that's affected student achievement across all of our student body. Someone, member Heyman, raise his hand there, so just link ahead of that.
Yeah, that's, sorry, I would also like to see the number of students that have benefited from the program, you know, the demographics of the student body. And just kind of back to member Alliance's point of what the economics assesses like, how it has impacted graduation rates or test scores.
So my question, all my questions you're giving, well, we need to pull this all together. Do you think that's enough time? I mean, isn't there more in-depth, taking more time than a week? I don't know.
I think they track this up pretty much every year, probably should be already.
You guys have to decide, but that's a long even after. Just take it together.
That's the top line.
Okay, so I.
You won't be here.
Well, I am opposed to this idea because I feel like it was sprung on us again, like in the past, things with A&amp;I have been sprung on us. So I'm hoping we can, because we didn't get prior notice of this, and so I'm going to be gone, and so is member Corbin, for our leadership objectives.
I understand that, but this is a presentation.
So could it be next week?
So you're going to be at conferences at night during the meeting?
Yes, we come until five o'clock.
Okay, but four p.m. is a start until six.
No, the workshops go until five. We have Friday morning, too.
So what is the urgency, as I'm asking? And it could be next month? Since we didn't.
I suppose it could. The original motion was that they present next week.
Oh, if their workshops end at five, there's nothing that says that they can't be early to be here. I mean, just like we have committee meetings, we have to leave things early to meet here more so. This is, if the motion was to have the presentation, like you said, it's just a presentation. I'll see if you want to be here, you'll leave early.
I have other commitments with MSBA, so I will not be able to be here. And I don't get the urgency why it has to be next week. Nobody's given me a good reason.
Are there other discussion? All right, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, directing administration, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. All right, with that, that brings us to reviewing upcoming calendar dates. One thing that I would like to add, especially for our viewing public, is that we will be changing that a little bit, especially with high-profile items on the agenda next week. We will be recording and streaming board meeting next week, and that will be the standard practice moving forward. So both the first of the month and the mid-month meetings will be recorded and streamed. Hopefully that will aid in the public's ability to see the work that we're doing in the board. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?